South Walton Community Council, Community Chaplain, sorry about that. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious God, we are so grateful to be here today for all who give of their time and their energy to make this community a better place to live. We ask that you send your Holy Spirit to fill us with a spirit of wisdom and a spirit of compassion that everything we do and say here this day might be pleasing in your sight. Keep us ever mindful of the needs of the most vulnerable among us. Make us good stewards of what we have been given and help us to grow together as one community. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call meeting to order. This is a regular meeting, January 8th, 2019, 19 of Walton County Board of Commissioners. Before we get started, just a, I'd like to say a personal note. We are losing our great fire chief, Rick Talbert. He's retiring and I've done my best to talk him out of it for several weeks and months, but Rick, could you please stand up? I know you hate this, but I, for everybody that doesn't know, Chief Talbert's been here quite a while and I would put his department against any fire department in the state of Florida. And I just want to personally thank the chief for the type of department he runs and he's very accessible, always been a help for me. We don't always agree on things, but we always respect each other and we're losing a great, great chief and a great friend and I'd like everybody to give him round. Okay. You notice we got two empty chairs up here. We got two of our commissioners in Commissioner training in Gainesville. This is not a date they can change. It's, you have to do it when they say we have to do it. So it'll be three hours, but three is a quorum, so we will get the county's business done today. All right, additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have two deletions and two additions. Under the deletions, the first one is on your consent agenda, item number seven. The request was to accept the internal audit report from the clerk's office concerning follow-up review of manual receipt books. After reviewing that, the clerk asked us to pull that off, that it was more appropriate for him to work with at this point than for the board to take action on it. So if that needs action, we'll bring it back at a further date, at a future date. Next item is under the TDC is a request to approve the Taylor Engineering proposal to conduct a coastal survey of Walton County beaches to determine location of the mean high waterline, the ECL and the beach profiles that are monuments and approval of Beach Operations Department to purchase survey equipment to be used for future locating of those properties. So that is a request to remove that from the TDC agenda. Then we have two additions that we're requesting. One is to request to schedule an executive session to discuss the DeFrances case, which as you know, we were in mediation in yesterday and so we'll have some discussion with you about that. The second one is a request to reschedule the public hearing, public workshop regarding the beach activities ordinance that was scheduled for this location tomorrow. Since we scheduled it, we found that there was a scheduling conflict and this was our first opportunity to get it back on the agenda to reschedule it. So we'll be requesting to reschedule that to a date in the near future.
Okay.
And those are our changes.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve the agenda with additions and deletions.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Do we have any public comment on any agenda item? If you're not going to be here to speak when that item comes up, you can come ahead and speak now, but you will have an opportunity to speak when it does come up. Approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Huh? Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Items to remove from the consent agenda. You have any commissioners?
No.
Okay. Now the approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion for that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, the Waste Management EAL.
Mr. Chairman, acknowledged by conflict of interest. I have filed a proper form with the clerk and will not vote in this matter.
As the chairman, I'll, since we have a short staff to the short commissioners today, I will step down from the gavel for this and make a motion that we accept the EAL.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pass the gavel.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, our first item, number 20, is an update and request for direction on property located behind the Freeport Business Park. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we discussed this 10 acre site behind our business park in Freeport with the possibility of acquiring that parcel for additional parking to the Freeport complex. We've had some discussions with the owner of the property. We've had some reviews by our environmental staff and I've found there's some things there that need to be worked through. We have notified the agent for the owner that we're, we do have interest. We actually made a very, very, very tentative offer with a number that would obviously come back to this board. We were, we were trying to get the first position in line. We understood there were some other folks interested, so we moved forward with that and it was, was very clear that the offer was tentative upon board approval and a number of other factors that you see addressed there in your board book, some environmental concerns that have to be worked through and worked out. But we believe we can get there and we still believe it will be an asset and our next step would be to hear back from the owners as to whether they have interest in entertaining an offer in, somewhere in the neighborhood of what we laid on the table. So that's an update. We don't have any action required unless you have some questions on what's been presented. We will continue down that path and again, our next action would be to hopefully hear back from them and bring your report back on, on that. Next item is regarding units two and three and the Crosspoint Church for the lease. Our first indication from Crosspoint was that if you, the 120 day clause was a deal killer for them. They have since came back and had some conversation that perhaps it is not and would like us to continue the negotiations for those two units. So absent any thing contrary to that from the board, we would continue moving forward with those discussions and obviously if we come to some terms, we'd bring it back to you for approval. But if you recall, the, we told them at the last meeting, meeting four, that the 120 day clause was very important because of the, we purchased that property for county use and that's what we intend to use it for. So that's back in discussion, so unless you tell us otherwise, we'll continue that conversation.
Any questions?
All right. Then item number two is, is again some more discussion regarding the Freeport Business Park. It's a request that you allow staff to negotiate or begin negotiating with a firm that has, we've been in touch with that provides health, support for healthcare facilities in, in the testing field, a very high-end, state-of-the-art facility that they are looking to relocate to Walton County. It would mean initially 40 to 60 jobs in the 70 to $80,000 range. At full build-out, full staffing, we'd be looking at perhaps 120 jobs, again, in that price range. They're looking for a place to get started. They work very hard to become a provider to, in the Florida Blue Network and that has been approved, so they need a presence. They've asked for us to consider allowing them to, to renovate and rent two units in that Freeport Park. And so it's our request today that you grant us permission to move forward with those discussions, primarily from an economic development standpoint, not necessarily looking from an incentive standpoint. They just, they need a place to call home for two, three years while they build out a 20,000 square foot facility that they're looking to locate in the county. So with your permission, we would move forward with discussions of locating them temporarily in the Freeport Center.
Is that in the east building or the west?
It would be in the east building.
I think my only concern with our staff and even if we only had half of their, say 10 cars, 15 cars from that facility.
Yes, ma'am.
Parking.
Yes, ma'am. And that's certainly something we will, we'll have to address as we have our conversation with them and, and agree 100% with that assessment that parking, as we see things grow, is, is going to be much more of an issue than what we see today. But we hope there are alternatives that we can look at to make it viable.
And I appreciate staff looking at ingress and egress.
Yes, ma'am.
Safety getting in and out because that's, that's a very busy intersection.
Yes, ma'am. Be more than happy to. Okay? So unless there's direction, otherwise we will move forward with that conversation and hopefully have you something back to consider in short order. Next item is number 23 is a request to appoint Robert Aggerton, Gary Mitchum, and Bob Hope to serve for an additional term on the Contractors Competency Board. So we just need a motion and, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Next item is a request to reject the sole bid associated with invitation to bid 019-003 for security monitoring services and to re-advertise. If you remember, at a recent meeting, we approved to, to move forward with JSC Systems to monitor the security facilities in the courthouses. In that negotiation and contract phase, there was a requirement that they would not enter to an agreement without having this particular requirement deemed within the notification in their contract. Our legal staff found that was contrary to state statute and we could not overcome that obstacle, so we're asking to reject those bids and we will re-advertise and hopefully get, be successful in our next effort.
Motion to reject.
Second.
Any thing from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item, number 25, is a request to reward RFQ 18-052 for CEI Services for County Road 288 Connector Road Incentive Grant Program Project and approved, began negotiations with a top-ranked firm, which was DRMP. There's a lengthy history of this project there in your board book. We're anxious to move this forward and this is the next step in that process, so your approval will allow us to negotiate with this top-ranked firm, DRMP, to provide these services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
No comment, sir, but that's all right.
You can comment.
No, I don't want to.
It's too late.
No, all the thing I want to say is, buddy, as soon as, since this is approved tonight, let's get the notice to proceed out as soon as possible and get them working on that. We need to get that project moved. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, before we...
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a suggestion, if you, as we added to the agenda to cancel tomorrow's meeting and schedule another date, if, if we would do that now, it would give us time to begin getting it over the airwaves and on the website as to when that, that date will be scheduled. So if you don't mind, we'll take that out of order.
So as Larry mentioned, we had a scheduling conflict with the Beach Activities Ordinance Workshop that was scheduled for tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at this location. We need to reschedule. The earliest we could reschedule would be the week after next.
Week after next?
Yes, sir. Any day the week after next. And I have Commissioner Nick and Commissioner Glywell's calendars, so, and then DeeDee's got, well, now I've got it. Hopefully I don't mess this up, the calendar of the availability in this room.
Would the 23rd be the date you're looking at?
We could do that. Yes, sir. Yes, we could.
The 16th is also possible?
Well, the 16th is next week, so...
Well, the 23rd. Now, the thing about it is, we need to get this thing moving.
Yes, sir. I agree.
We should have been having this meeting back in October and here it is January. So as far as I'm concerned, the sooner the better. The 23rd, if that's the only thing we can do, we need to get it done.
Okay. We need a motion?
Motion to have it on the 23rd of January, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. at South Walton.
Second.
Second. Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board?
No, thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 So we was going to work on sending out that notification and then we'll work on making sure that tomorrow morning, if anybody shows up, that they're notified of what happened.
Didn't we have two meetings tomorrow?
Judge Green has court here tomorrow and unfortunately, whenever we scheduled the workshop, we weren't aware of that.
But wasn't there a second meeting after?
Oh, that got rescheduled by the planning department.
Okay. All right.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm not sure of the date for the mobility.
Mobility?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure Matt can tell us whenever he comes up.
Is that it, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Toose.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have on the agenda, actually, I'd like to just clarify one thing. We pulled the request to approve for Taylor Engineering proposal from them for the beach survey. So I'd just like to explain why that was pulled, just I'm sure people are kind of wondering why that was pulled. But we're approving the contract tonight with Taylor Engineering, so we thought it would be appropriate to get the contract approved and then we'll move forward the next meeting with this survey. So we'll bring that back to the board at the next meeting. So I just wanted to let y'all know why we pulled that. So up first, item number 26 for the TDC this evening, request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the contract 018-042 with South Walton Fire District for lifeguard services. I'd like to explain a few details of this contract. We worked with legal and with South Walton Fire District to kind of put some à la carte items in this contract. So that way, if we don't decide we want to do something now, we certainly can do it in the future. It's in the scope of the contract. We had an issue about two years ago, when I first got here, that we wanted to expand the season to include October and we could not because it was not included in the scope. So we just wanted to make sure moving forward that we had some leeway within this contract to do some things if we needed to in the future. So a couple of things, I'll just detail real quick. The contract is for $1,164,601 and that is including an October extension. So right now, the contract currently runs through September. This past September was the end of that contract. So October now is a very busy month for us with fall break, so we wanted to add October to that. So that's included in that $1,164,000 figure. There are a couple of other things that are kind of à la carte, if you will. ATV replacement schedule, that's included in the contract. So if the South Walton Fire District needs to replace those vehicles over the course of this contract, we can do that. Same thing with jet skis. And then the other thing that is in here is a year-round coverage. So right now, we're extending it to October, but at one of the previous TDC council meetings, the council recommended that we have year-round coverage. So we have people who come here year-round. We have snowbirds. We have people on the beach, even if they're not getting into the water. So they felt that it would be relevant to make that recommendation for the board to consider. And South Walton Fire District, obviously, is here this evening, so if you have any questions on that, I think they can answer that as well. There's also some challenges of them retaining their talent in the off-season, so this would help them do that as well. So for us to do that, the first year of year-round coverage would be $350,791 and subsequent years would be $222,000. So just wanted to give that information to the board so you can make a decision on how you want to move forward. The only thing that we absolutely need to do tonight, so they can start moving forward, the fire district that is, can start moving forward with their coverage for the new season coming up, we need to get the contract approved now. Whether or not we say, let's not worry about ATVs or jet skis or year-round coverage, we don't need to decide that this evening. We can decide that at a later date. We would like just to get the basic contract approved tonight, at least. Any questions from me or for the fire district?
You have any question?
For Jay. Jay, in our conversations concerning this contract, I think I asked for, and I don't know if you were able to get it yet or not, we can let chief.
Yeah.
But I wanted to know what kind of rescues, service, calls for service between November 1st and February, which is this contract extension.
Correct. I did add, I did make the inquiry with South Walton Fire District and David was going to look into that. David, do you want to address that at all or the chief? Do you want to address that? I'll let the chief address that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thank you and thank you for the opportunity. We were asked that question. We, we have instances of medical calls and water rescue calls in that period between October and March. Statistically, that's run anywhere from two per month, all the way up to over 20 per month. What we've seen and what the trend has been over the last several years, we've seen it overall for our fire district. We ran last year in 2018, over 6,500 calls for service in, in the community. About 4,400 of them are medical calls. We've seen a 13% increase. Consequently, we've seen the same kind of increases which beach safety, as we know, we're a year-round destination. We have 16 reefs. We have people that scuba dive, snorkel. That's not so much seasonal as it is year-round now. Kiteboarders, surfboarders, paddleboarders and the like. So we do still see there's instances of people requiring medical attention and water rescues on our beaches during that period of time. So we felt like being a year-round destination, we're at a point now, and that, and I, I bring that to you, that that's why we presented that in our contract, that we feel it's time that we're a year-round destination with these reefs to provide that service. This isn't like July service, I'll call it, where we have 33 lifeguards all day long out there on our 26 miles of beaches. This is five lifeguards that would, would, you know, protect in zonal areas that can provide us assistance, even if there is a medical call. If you dial 911, you're going to get one of our fire rescue vehicles there with paramedics and they're, they're going to take care of that patient. But I can tell you, even during the summer or even in the off, what we'll call the off-season, if there is such a thing now, you're talking about the difference of minutes where you have somebody that's on the beach or patrolling that beach or roving that beach on an all-terrain vehicle. Our trained guards have made medical interventions that have saved minutes and lives, you know, where the response time is three minutes versus five to six minutes going through traffic. So that's probably a long answer to your, to your question. Any other questions for me?
No, that's it, Jay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
What's the board's wishes?
Question, Jay.
Yes, sir.
I know that in our discussions, there was about 37.5 for ATV replacement or maintenance or whatever and 39.2 for jet skis. Is there any need to have those replaced at this time? And you may answer that. I don't know if the chief can or will or won't to. I should have asked you that while you was up here, chief. My apology.
I'll get more time on my exercise.
You ain't got much time left now.
That's correct. But I'm still in the game. Jet skis and all-terrain vehicles, yes, we do need them. As most of y'all know, what we're using out there, we put heavy undercoating on them. We protect them. They're rinsed off, they're washed off every day. They're cared for probably better than the average ATV or jet ski. Salt air, salt water decreases the, you know, the lifespan of these. We contacted other agencies in Florida and the country and the Florida Beach Patrol's Chiefs Association. This has been declared a problem and a challenge for every agency that provides beach safety in, along our coastal communities because it's, it's the salt air that intrudes these vehicles.
How many years you getting out of each one of them, average?
Three if we're lucky. Three if we're lucky. And we have them on a rotating schedule because we know we're obligated contractually and it's just, it's just, it's, makes sense to us even from a, whether it's a fire truck, a ladder truck or an ATV, we have those on a replacement schedule that we're not coming to you or coming to our fire board to ask for 15 of them at one time. We have them on a rotating schedule where we're replacing a few at a time to keep the cost, you know, keep it efficient and keep ourselves operational.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
And I'd just add real quick to the chief's comments on the three years, that's our rotation for our equipment as well on the beach. The beach just eats equipment up really fast. I mean, the salt, the water. So I mean, three years, I think, is probably what we can get out of our equipment. So I think, you know, fire district echoes that.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
And this is to extend it year-round?
We haven't made a motion yet.
No. That's what, that's what the ask is in the contract.
So the, the whole contract is for the year-round or is that something as an add-on?
I mean, the contract can be for that. It's stipulated in the scope, so if the board says we want year-round coverage, we could just...
Okay.
And the, and the year-round coverage would go from 1.1 to 1.6, give or take, to include the 420.
So for the first year, the total, if we do the ATV replacement schedule, the jet skis and the year-round coverage, it'd be $1,592,153. And then the subsequent years would be $1,425,000 and then the fourth year would be $1,387,000. So there's a scale there. It, it has to do with their equipment and how they replace things.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion?
Does the motion need to be for the year-round or just adding October?
It can be for whatever we want.
It can be either.
Okay.
And we can always bring it back, you know, if we want to do the year-round, we can bring that back.
Yeah, the way this is written, if the board chooses not to do that at this time, we could come back in two months, six months, and we could say, okay, we want to add the year-round coverage.
And Jay, what do you suggest? I mean, what's, what's really the feeling out there as far as year-round?
You know, the, the council recommended year-round to the board and so I would certainly defer to the council. You know, we do have a lot of people here year-round. I mean, obviously not as many during peak season, but I, I think the difference in the price here that we're talking about, I think there's a justified dollar to say we have year-round coverage.
And right now, it sounds like we already need to improve, upgrade the equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
On the third year. Motion to approve the contract with year-round coverage?
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Any more discussion from the board? We have one person?
My name is Barbara Morano, 12, Dr. L. It seems like you're going to vote for this, which is wonderful. That's why I'm here to support this 100%. I mean, our services are wonderful. They've been excellent, but the expansion and we need this flexibility year-round. I mean, Jay mentioned it, we're a year-round community. We have guests that come. Sometimes they just don't bring their brains with them, as we know.
Very seldom.
And, and I really would appreciate you supporting what the chief said, what David, Sammy, we've all seen excellent services and I came specifically tonight just to share that with you. that with you. So I appreciate your support.
Would you spell your last name?
Last name, sure. It's M-O-R-A-N-O.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob?
Bob Rook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I also support the contract for the life, life-serving, life-saving function that's supplied by the South Walton Fire District. I have one question structurally about the contract. Are the, are the, is the year-round coverage an option? Okay, that's, I want to make sure.
That's what I asked before I made the motion.
It is an option. It's not, it's not, you're not voting for it in the contract, but you're voting to have the option to add it to the contract, or approve it, as necessary. Thank you.
No, no, no.
Commissioner Nipper's motion was to approve the contract with the option for year-round coverage.
Okay, so it's not, it's not an option. Then it's, it's going to be included in the contract.
That was my intent.
Okay, thank you.
Rich?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rich Jaffe. I'm the president of the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. And I'm actually here on a slightly different issue, but I cannot help but lend our voice to this motion as well. Just yesterday, I was on the beach, and I was watching a family having a great time. They had small kids with boogie boards who were going out into the water. I think it was yesterday. Red flags flying. I see it all the time. I was fishing, but I was watching these guys, thinking, oh, man, if they get into trouble, where's the lifeguard? There are two lifeguards working right now, twenty-six miles of beach. That's nuts. We need it. We need them on the beaches much more often. And you just can't say enough about it. We have people on those beaches constantly now. I see it daily. And to even hesitate for a moment on putting more, I would say boots, but they're usually not wearing boots, on the beach, you know, would just be a critical mistake. Please, give them exactly what they're asking for. We need all the support we can get out there. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Commissioners, on behalf of the fire district and myself, I want to say thank you for your support, your continued support, and as I think you guys know, we won't let you down. Thank you.
Good luck to you, chief.
Good luck to you, chief.
When's your last day?
February twenty-eighth.
Oh, no, right now, no.
February twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is item twenty-seven, request to award and negotiate the highest-ranked firm, Dewberry, on RFQ zero-one-eight dash zero-four-one for architecture, engineering, design services for the new TDC visitor center administrative offices. We had put out an RFQ, and three firms responded, and we did interviews with all three firms. Dewberry was the highest-ranked firm. The other two firms were Arcascape's and DAG.
Motion to approve?
We have a second? I'll step down from the chair and second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, two-one.
And Brian Kellenberger is going to handle the other agenda items.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. Appreciate your time this evening. Couple items of business. First one's item number twenty-eight, request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the contract zero-one-eight dash zero-three-three for Taylor Engineering, Inc., for coastal engineering and coastal environment, environmental management services. This is our coastal management consulting contract that we redid this year to include some more scopes of services. The, it's a as-needed consulting and management contract. Exhibit A has the list of, of services they'll provide, and Exhibit B is the unit prices they'll be charged out at. Each project or subsequent, you know, project will be done by a task order that we'll bring back to y'all for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, any discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, sir. Next item is request to award invitation to bid zero-one-eight zero-four-five for Neighborhood Beach Accesses Group Two renovation project to Hughes and Company, LLC, in the amount of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign contract zero-one-eight dash zero-four-five. This is our renovation projects to Neighborhood Beach Accesses in the Seagrove area, includes five beach accesses, and it is the construction efforts from the design and permitting we've been doing for the last couple of years on all of our beach accesses.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, sir. Next item, number thirty-one, request to award invitation to bid zero-one-eight dash zero-four-six Neighborhood Beach Access Group Three renovation project to Hughes and Company, in the amount of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract zero-one-eight dash zero-four-six. This is a continuation of that previous project, and these are accesses in the Seacrest area, and in the Eastern Lake area. Includes Neighborhood Beach Accesses. It's the renovation of, that we started on in the previous years.
And this was another sold bidder that's been out for about a year, hasn't it?
Yes, we've been working on these for quite some time. We have all of the beach accesses under design, actually, we've completed the design and permitting, and now we're bidding these out for construction.
And there's no discount for the second or third?
No, ma'am. Like I said, we put them out, you know, for competitive bid. You know, we, we've done it in, in groups, you know, typically five or six each. We hope to get better participation in our next round.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, right now, you know, people that do boardwalks, do walkovers, and that type of construction, pretty busy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, sir. Few updates. At the previous meeting, you asked us to redo a beach access map in preparation for a discussion on improving, unimproved beach accesses. We're still working on that map. Our, our GIS department is doing that. I expect to have it back to you for the first meeting in February. And of course, we'll convey it to you prior to that. If you have any questions, you can contact me about it.
And that will include the ownership that...
From Montego.
Commissioner, right, Commissioner Chapman was asking about.
So I'll, I'll discuss that with each of you individually before we meet in February.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Norris?
Yes, sir. Item number thirty-three is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a contract for the sale of the former bank building on Baldwin Avenue. And this, you guys have already approved the sale. This is just formalizing it in the contract, so we can go ahead with the closing by the end of April. And this is to move our records facility from the bank building to the building that's being constructed by our office.
Okay, and it will be ready, right?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, it looks like they're making progress.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Item number thirty-four is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a contract to purchase two parcels of property on Sloss Avenue. It's the pieces of property between administration and the legal office. And each of you should have a copy of the contract. I believe the purchase price is forty thousand dollars, and that's for both parcels.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
And commissioners, the only other item I have is the add-on, which is a request to hold an executive session in the de-franchise litigation. And I would suggest, if you guys are okay with it, is maybe we could do it before or immediate, immediately after the January twenty-second ECT meeting?
That's what I was going to recommend. We do it maybe at the end of the board meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay, so, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Um, Max Warken, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, Mac.
Commissioners, responding to the question earlier, we presently have the mobility fee presentations right after the board meeting on the twenty-second.
So maybe we could do it, can everyone get there early on the twenty-second?
Well, I can be there at daylight if you want it, but...
He's just across the street.
We do have another morning.
That's right.
I'm sorry, I was just corrected. It is the twenty-fourth for our meeting, so the twenty-second is...
Oh, okay. Thanks, Mac.
Mac, you have us all scared.
I know, for Commissioner Anderson, so wake up at...
All right, so, we got a second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? Any more board discussion, since we kind of messed that up? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Chapman?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Nipper?
Other than the fact that Alabama didn't show up last night.
I knew that was coming. I knew something was coming.
Yeah, Bob, I know you were shaking.
I'm surprised you mentioned that.
Well, it is what it is.
Yeah, I had Laura, I had Laura on, on watch last night. She's... Commissioner Nipper?
Yes. Request to appoint, make a motion to request to appoint Vicki Waterman to the zoning board of adjustment, and DeeDee has the application, if you haven't seen it.
I have, okay. Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion from the audience? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Is that it, Commissioner?
Yes.
I have nothing but to say I'm sorry for my Alabama friends, happy for my Clemson friends. Mike, are you ready?
You got to set us up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any further comments?
Yeah. We have, this is time for public comments about anything you want to talk about. County-related, three minutes.
County-related.
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. My comment tonight is called Butterfly Storm. Have you ever been kissed by a rainbow? To stand prostrate in ascension on a sand dune with red, yellow, orange, black, brown, and white, rushing over you so megalithically, that if it were a sound, it would be deafening. But this storm comes only with silence, a delight for the eyes, God's spectrum of light, dancing, fluttering, swimming by you through the very air you breathe. And maybe one should be so lucky as to have one tiny piece of that light, one little speck of that creation, land on your skin, so gentle and light, it can only be described as being kissed by God. The monarch butterfly migration across the Gulf of Mexico, from the Yucatan Peninsula to the Panhandle of Florida, was such a massive event that it could be seen from outer space without a telescope. The astronauts thought that there was red algae growing on the Gulf, but it was moving faster than the water. And they realized it was billions and billions of monarch butterflies flying across the Gulf. There hasn't been a butterfly storm since nineteen eighty-two, because you have, in the last thirty years, managed to destroy something that took God sixty-five million years to create. You brought downtown Atlanta to a sand dune by putting an underground parking garage across the street from Gulf Place. Everything you do is shameful. I'm still being electrocuted by trucks. Why is that? You can't explain it. Of course not, because you don't understand it. You don't understand much. It was so beautiful.
We're going to take about a ten-minute break, and so we'll be back about ten till, according to that clock, which is...
We need to change it, please. So if you'll let me recognize one.
Mac, before you get started, we got a little housekeeping today.
Yeah, and an abundance of caution, as, as, as Mac came up earlier, and we talked about the twenty-second for the presentations for the mobility study, and the twenty-fourth. The board had initially set the twenty-second as the date, and you may recall that Mac checked with some of the presenters, and they were not available on the twenty-second, but we're on the twenty-fourth. So we confirmed with them to come on the twenty-fourth, but I'm not sure that we ever, this board ever took the appropriate action to set that date for the twenty-fourth. So what we would just request is a motion that says we hear the mobility fee study proposals on the twenty-fourth. And I think we were set at nine AM, or shortly thereafter.
Well, as soon as the QJ meeting is concluded.
Yeah, that's right. So that way, we're, we're all knowing that we're correct. So if that makes sense. If not, I'll try to do it again.
All right, so the motion would be to have the mobility study presentations on January the twenty-fourth.
January twenty-fourth, immediately following the QJ.
As soon as possible after the QJs.
That works.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion from the audience? We all in agreement on this up here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Now, Mac, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Item number one and item number two are related. The first is chapter five, and then the second item is the companion stormwater manual that we'll ask you to adopt by resolution at the appropriate time. Since both of those include the parking and proposed changes to parking ordinance that would reduce the requirements in some cases related to vacation rentals, we want to have a discussion with the sheriff related to parking, so we don't approve something, or ask you to approve something that we can't enforce. Additionally, we're talking about having another community meeting on the stormwater, to give us a little bit more time to make sure we get that right, because that will be a significant change. So we'd ask that item number one be continued to February twelfth, at four PM in this location, and item number two be continued to February twelfth at four PM in this location.
Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number three, this is part of the Conference of Plan Land Development Code update project. This is a request to adopt by ordinance the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan as an appendix to the Land Development Code. We have previously had first reading on this item on December twelfth, and it is still in the same condition it was when you had first reading. We request that you move to adopt the ordinance, adopting the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan update as an appendix to the Land Development Code.
Okay, Mac, if memory serves me correct, and Mr. Jaffe, you're over there, so you probably can help on this. There was, I think, a request from the board some time back for the Inlet Beach neighborhoods to get together and try to work through all those issues. And I make an assumption it happened, and... and I'm making the assumption it happened, and what is now coming for us to approve has been addressed with everybody that would be affected. Is that a fair statement?
That is what is before you tonight, we had a series of community meetings. Uh, Public Works was also involved in helping us with the public areas and portions of this, uh, and that is what's before you tonight.
Okay. Motion, motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Rich? Rich, please spell your last name.
It's Rich Jaffe, J-A-F-F-E, and I'm the president of the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. Um, I'll be brief here. My, my point before you right now is simply to say thanks. Um, my family's owned property in Inlet Beach for fifty years. My wife and I are full-time residents there, and the plan that, um, has governed the Inlet Beach was originally passed back in the mid-nineties, and it hasn't been modified, amended, anything significant since that point. It's been that long, and as you know, things have changed a hell of a lot in Inlet Beach, as well as the rest of Walton County. And this is the first substantive change in the parameters and the governance of Inlet Beach and what people can do and try and get away with, and what we will allow and permit and want to see. And this is a big deal, and we could not have done it without Mac's help, without Kristen Shell and Kelly Freymeyer. They've worked tirelessly on this thing, and, uh, you know, we just, we want to say thank you, we've worked on this for two years.
Okay, uh, my question is, I think when we was having some discussions about this some time back, there was a parcel land north of ninety-eight that was industrial. Has that zoning change happened, or will change?
Anyone else? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, the next item on our agenda, um, is a request to transmit, uh, the glossary that we're asking to delete from the comprehensive plan. Uh, as you may recall, in our previous hearings, we have consolidated both the glossary from the comprehensive plan and the definition section from the Land Development Code. We now have one definition section of the Land Development Code that applies to both documents, uh, and that, um, it's an understatement to say that's providing some tremendous consistency between the two documents.
I'm really so excited about something like this, but I'm pretty excited.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the floor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners, that brings us to item number thirty-nine on your agenda. This is the Miramar Amalfi Regional Beach Access, uh, small-scale amendment. Uh, it's been reviewed by Bob Baronte. Uh, it's submitted on behalf of Larry Jones and the Walton County Board of Commissioners, requesting approval to amend the future land use category from coastal center to parks and recreation on approximately two-point-one acres. Uh, the project's located due south the intersection of Highway twenty-three-seventy-eight and Alamo Street, and it's identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, again, this is the future land use map change. Uh, we will have a companion zoning amendment that will be coming through the, the process in the next month, uh, now that we've adopted zoning in December. Um, but this is the future land use map amendment change.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Come ahead and state your name, spell your last name, please. Come up, you have to come up here, sir. We're all, we can't hear you that far away.
My name is Michael Sullivan, I own a condo, an Amalfi condo resorts, and S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N. And my question is, uh, could you tell me exactly what it means to change from coastal center to parks and recreation? What, what's involved, exactly what's involved?
I'm proposing a regional beach access, it will be a public park.
Public park, but, okay. What, what is a coastal center then?
Uh, that's, that's a future land use map category that is primarily residential in nature. Um, and the parks and recreation is appropriate for the proposed use that the commissioners have, have approved.
But that, that doesn't change the, uh, the map that we, we showed, exactly what was going to be done?
Uh, no, this is not the development order, this is just the authorizing change to the law that allows that development order to be approved, and that site plan that you're referring to is part, will be part of the development order, and that will come through the development review process in the next few weeks, uh, once we complete this process. This authorizes that.
Okay, we'll, we'll be notified as the, when the new site comes. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Will, will the development order be less than minor, a minor development order?
Uh, I think it will be a minor development order, but we will provide notice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners, uh, the next item and the last item tonight, Southeast Land Partners LLC, small-scale amendment. This is a request to approve by ordinance, uh, it's been reviewed by Bob Baronte, uh, submitted by Interlight Engineering on behalf of Southeast Land Partners, requesting approval to amend the future land use category from rural village at the time this application was made. Uh, it is now mixed use, uh, but it is going to commercial on approximately three-point-five-seven acres. Project's located from the intersection of three-thirty-one North and Jolly Bay Road, um, about one-quarter mile, um, on the east side, and identified by the parcel numbers in your packet. This item will also be coming back in the next month for a zoning amendment now that we've adopted zoning ordinance uh, in chapter two of the Land Development Code.
Mac, do we know at this stage what kind of development's going to go in there?
Uh, no, sir, we don't, but it would be a development that would be consistent with the new, um, uh, commercial, uh, future land use map category. The zoning amendment will be to general commercial.
Okay.
Uh, so it would be a use that would be available within the general commercial range of uses. The applicant is here, and our, the applicant's agent, he may, uh, wish to provide some information on that.
Mac, will it be compatible with the, with our, or does it need to be compatible at this point with our future land use plan for three-thirty-one corridor?
Three-thirty-one corridor plan, we expect that whatever development comes through the development review process would be consistent with that, and I confirmed that with David Smith, the agent, uh, just before the meeting also.
Good evening, I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and as Mac stated, uh, we're not exactly sure what the proposed use will end up being exactly, but it will be a commercial use that's consistent with the future land use of commercial and then the general commercial zoning classification. And then, once we do make application and go through the process, we'll have to meet any of the requirements that are in place at that time, we'll certainly do so.
David, do you know if sewer's all the way down to that point yet?
I'm not exactly sure yet or not.
I'm not sure either. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Any more discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Is that all you got, Mac?
That's it, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.